Welcome to the Livonia City Council. The Honorable Brian Meakin will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you all rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Meakin. We'd like to welcome you to the September 9th study session of your Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,881st regular meeting, which it will be a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, September 23rd. We have no council absences tonight, and it says to announce any special groups. You're all special out there, so we don't have to worry about that, except we do have our city treasurer with us tonight, Linda Shield, and our mayor's director, Dave Varga, as well, and our chief of police, Curtis Cade, and also Jerome, who is our city inspector. Thank you, Hannah. Thank you for being here tonight, also to help us. Okay. Council, any announcements at this point? Okay, we did have some. Did we have any birthdays? You had a birthday. No, you didn't. Okay. We had a birthday, and so we're going to move on. This is a study meeting. There will be no votes taken at this meeting. However, council members may offer a combination of votes or resolutions for each item. Approving, denying, or referring resolution to a committee or a city department for the report and recommendation may also be offered. A resolution of just no further action can be offered as well. There are some items that will simply be received and filed for the information of the city council. Please note that all the items on tonight's agenda will move to the regular meeting of Monday, September 23rd, where they will be officially voted on. If you'd like to participate in tonight's meeting, if you'd approach podium to my left or right, give us your name and address for the record when you hear your item come up on the yellow sheet, which is our agenda for this evening. We'd appreciate it. Okay, with that, we'll begin audience communication. Anyone wishing to speak to the council in any manner, not before us on the yellow sheets, would you approach podium to my left or right? Hearing and seeing no one, we'll move into our new business. This is a block party. Is Teresa Willard here? Hi, Teresa. To be held Saturday, September 28th of this year, from 3:00 to 10:00, on Ramblewood between Perth and Skoom, with a rain date of Saturday, October 5th. Hi, is this your first one, or?
Uh, no.
Okay. Number is five or six?
I don't know. It's been a long time, though.
Long time. Okay, great. Okay, and what are you going to do? You're going to have a barbecue and some music and some games, it says.
Yes.
Okay, great, great, okay.
Madam President.
Yes, please.
I'll offer an approving resolution for the consent agenda. Wish them luck.
All righty, you have an approving on consent, and so you don't have to reappear at the meeting.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming in, too. All right, item two, is anybody from the audience want to comment on that? Any other council members? No? Okay. There's also a block party. Stacy, are you here? Yes, you are. Okay, to be held Saturday, October 19th, from 2:00 to 10:00 p.m. on Middleborough Street between Westmore and Mayfield, with rain date of Saturday, October 26th. Okay, this is over in Kimberly Oaks, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Can you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Stacy Ensalmo. I live at 32944 Middleborough.
Okay, and is that Livonia?
That is, in Kimberly Oaks, yes.
Got it. I'm just joking with you. Okay, and you want to do, it's a Halloween block party.
We do. We want to have a Halloween block party. We're going to switch it up this year.
Okay.
Do the whole pumpkin carving and apples, you know, bobbing for apples and donuts on a string, and we're going to have bounce houses and a taco bar and a band, hopefully.
Sounds like something we'd want to come to.
Yeah, if I could get your address, I'll just send you guys a...
Oh, okay.
3300.
Thirty-three hundred.
Civic Center Drive.
Okay, I'm sorry. Councilman Vice President had asked, and then Councilwoman White.
I was just going to say, did you apply for the neighborhood grant? Get this off, or?
You know, I was too late.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, was there like a May cutoff?
Yeah, I think there is, but it sounds like it would have been a candidate.
I actually didn't know that there was an eight-week timeframe to turn this slip in, so that's why we pushed it back to do a Halloween party instead.
Probably for the best anyways.
Yeah, it'll be fun.
Yeah, at least you don't have to do Christmas. Okay, go right ahead.
I was going to offer the approving resolution on consent, if there's no objection.
Okay, great. So, Councilwoman White has offered an approving on consent, which means you get to stay home and enjoy your family. You don't need to come back.
Today?
Today? Yeah. Yeah, today, the 23rd, whenever.
You said you don't have to come in the next meeting.
Yeah, to the meeting.
I'll take it, thank you.
You don't have to come back. Sorry, didn't mean to be unclear.
No, no, that's fine, thank you.
So, enjoy yourself and good luck bobbling.
Okay, thank you.
Bye-bye. All right, item three is a request to waive the sidewalk requirement. Is Michael List here? Here he comes. Okay, for a single-family home to be constructed at 18428 Folks. Can you give us your address, Mr. List?
Yep, my name's Michael List. My address is 18238 Deering Street, Livonia, Michigan.
Okay. All righty, want to give us a little hint of what you'd like to do there? We don't want a sidewalk, obviously, but...
Yeah, waive the sidewalk. On the particular street that we're on, there are no other sidewalks. I guess a few years ago, a couple of the neighbors came, they redid the road, and at that time, the neighbors were in a consensus that they didn't want sidewalks there at that time, I'm pretty sure.
So you don't have streetlights either, right?
Uh, no.
Nope.
Nope.
Okay. All righty, council, any questions for Mr. List? Yes, go right ahead.
Taking a look at the neighborhood and looking at Google Maps, it's evident that there's no other homes in the immediate vicinity that have sidewalks. I think it certainly makes sense, and this is why that ordinance is in place.
Great.
I'll offer an approving resolution on waiving the sidewalk.
Great.
Appreciate it.
Certainly.
All right, so...
Do you want that on consent?
Yes, absolutely, sir.
Okay, on consent, then. Yes, go right ahead, Mr. List.
I was just wondering, does that mean I have to come back on the 23rd?
No, sir, it doesn't mean that, but if you want to be nice, you could, but no.
Maybe I'll come visit, you know, who knows?
Come visit us anytime, yes, sir.
It is kind of a cool experience, living in the city.
Well, we're glad to have you here, and thank you for what you're doing, building a nice new home for somebody, right?
Uh, yep. We'll see if it's me and my wife and kids, I'm not sure yet.
Oh, well, great.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, guys.
Thanks for what you're doing.
Yep.
Yes, sir. Bye-bye. And no, you don't have to come back, sir. No. Okay. Item four, then, was there anyone from the audience? We have kind of a light audience out there, so I don't want to be disrespectful to anybody that wanted to speak, if I don't see anyone. Okay. Request to maintain a membership in the Oakland County Courts in the Law Enforcement Management Information System. This is brought to us by the police, and I'm going to let Chief Cade explain it. Go right ahead, Chief.
Good afternoon, Madam President, members of council. The honor before you is essentially a request that we come to you every five years or so to request your authorization, basically for expenditures going forward for the next five years, to maintain our membership with Clemis. We've been a member of Clemis since 2000, so it's been 19 years, and they provide a suite of services, not only to us, but to agencies, federal agencies, state agencies, county agencies, really throughout southeast Michigan and beyond. It's expanded, not only in the membership numbers, but in the services over the years. Our CAD dispatch, our data computers, certainly lean access, electronic citations, crash reports, the packet is pretty lengthy in what they do for the region, including court services as well. We are one of the 18 member agencies that have voting rights, if you will, and are able to give insight and direction to Clemis, to provide us with the services that we need in records management and serving our communities. So, with that, requesting your authorization to continue with this membership, and on page two, we have an outline of the costs and the projected costs going forward through 2023. And there are, we anticipate funds, of course, being budgeted in years to come, as they have been in the years in past, to maintain that membership.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Yes, Councilwoman McIntyre.
I'd like to offer the approving resolution on consent, if there are no objections. But, Chief, just, how did this end up in Oakland County? I know it goes back many decades, but it's interesting, right, that it's in Oakland County and just, I know you could give us an encyclopedic reason, but...
Well, this, yeah, this whole format began in 1982, when Oakland County was the hub or the base, and it was initially just Oakland County geared, and then over the years, it has expanded well beyond that. And when we joined in 2000, we became basically their catastrophic backup site, and that gave us the pricing for in-county, because there was a separate fee structure for out-county agencies. And at that time, we negotiated with that and obtained the in-county rates, which, of course, were more favorable for us back in that time. So, they, this program has grown in magnitude, and again, in the services that's made, in my opinion, agencies that are members, I mean, much more comprehensive and efficient in how they provide their services, and providing data to the community as well. The crime mapping that we offer, people can subscribe to that and get data of, that is relatively current, no more than two days old, on things that happened in the neighborhood or at different areas in the city. So, it's a very comprehensive suite of services.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, please, Chris.
With permission, I'd like to ask the Chief a question not directly related to Clemis.
Go right ahead.
Since we have you here, could you just give us a little update and overview on how the Ring Doorbell program is going for maybe citizens who aren't aware of that? And I know you guys have done a lot of publicity in the mayor's office and administration publicized it, too, but since you're here tonight.
Thank you. No, that program is, it's in its infancy with us. We rolled it out a few months ago, and it has been very successful. We saw this as an opportunity to, quite frankly, be more engaged with the community and actually offer incentives as well. We give away a Ring doorbell once a month, we hold a drawing, and that's a partnership that we developed with Rang back a couple of months ago. But it's been very productive for us in developing suspect information, and quite frankly, it's not uncommon that we're reaching out to residents through that program throughout each week, asking for their assistance in helping either locate suspect information or develop other information for investigations. But it's been a very successful program.
So, citizens get a Ring doorbell, and then they, then they can, then they register with you, right?
Correct.
So you know who the citizens are, residents who want to participate?
Correct. There's an app, a neighbor's app, that you would register with that app, and then, and you can, you can opt out of that sharing as well. And the only way that we can access any of that data is if you invite us in. We can't access it outside of that, nor would we want to.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Thank you. Okay, Chief, we have an approving on consent. Were there any others? No? Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, council.
Excellent work, thank you. Okay, council, is there anyone from the audience? No? I didn't see anybody rushing up here. Okay. Item five is a request to approve payment and extend contract with BSNA software. This is brought to us by our city treasurer. Go right ahead, Treasure Shield.
Thank you, Madam President and council members. I'm requesting approval of the yearly payment to BSNA software for the next three years for their software support for our tax database and internet service for the tax and assessing system, with the amount not to exceed $25,000 per year. BSNA is the sole provider for this service, and has been doing an excellent job working with my staff, providing support services. Approval of this request will mean that the city of Livonia continue to provide free-of-charge tax and assessing information, not only for our residents, but also to mortgage companies, title companies, realtors, contractors, and prospective buyers throughout the city, through the city website. With this letter that I sent, I also sent a copy of the last resolution that city council approved in 2016, along with a report showing what the payments were for 2016, 17, and 18. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Council, your direction, your comments.
Madam Chair.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Be happy to offer the approving resolution. This has been an ongoing contractor for the city. The BSNA software works very well for us, and I think I'm fully supportive of continuing this arrangement. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any others? Anyone from the audience? You have an approving then on consent, was it?
Consent, yes.
Consent. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Great job. Okay, item six is a request to authorize appropriation and expenditure to Department of Inspection. Go right ahead, I'll let you take it away. Jerome?
Good evening, Madam President, members of council. So I'm here to seek payment to Ultra Green, not to exceed $30,000 for our weed contractor this year. We were notified in the spring by Maverick Property Maintenance, who was our contract holder to cut grass, that they were closing their doors and would no longer be in business and unable to fill their contract. So, in that process, it was too late in the year to find any contractors that could support this with the manpower needed, because most of that's temporary, temporary employees. So we spoke with Ultra Green, who is the contractor for the city parks, and they offered to help us out for this year, and in the next month, we'll be going out for bid for next year's contract. So, I didn't expect them to be able to get this much cut, but they were able to put things together, and I'll now exceed $15,000, so I'm here to ask for that budgeted amount to be approved for Ultra Green.
Vice President Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I want to say we're not accustomed to, but I'll say for sure, I'm not accustomed to you coming here for this sort of thing, right? Is this a program, just so we can be clear to people who are watching at home, this is when there's like a vacant property or somebody neglects to cut the grass, we go out and we have the contractor cut the grass, correct?
That's correct. It's for properties that are in violation of the nine inches in height of weed and grass.
Yeah, it's a great program. So, is this something that ends up, at the end of the day, being cost neutral, where after we charge the residents or the property owners who are neglecting to cut their lawn, we recoup the money that we pay out? Or how does, what's the efficiency of collecting the payment for these services? And I'm, I'm not asking that to put you on the spot, I'm just, I'm curious to know how that actually works out in the end.
Yeah, so, so it is paid back. Either we send out a bill after we've cut the property, that bill includes the cut plus an administrative cost. That administrative cost goes up, depending on how many times, the first two times is $75 administrative cost added to that. The third time and above is $125. And then if they don't pay that bill, that gets added to their taxes, so we'll collect it either by the bill or through taxes.
Okay. So it is a, at least a cost-neutral program?
Yes.
And it's a very big incentive for people to cut their grass and maintain their property?
Absolutely.
Okay. Madam President?
Certainly.
I would be happy to offer an approving resolution for consent.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, please, go right ahead.
No objection to that, but I have a question. So, Jerome, do we, for the things that your inspection department finds where you need to go cut the grass, is, does all that go through this program, or do we have some internal resources that we use for some of that, too? Or do we outsource all of it?
No, everything we do is outsourced.
Okay. So, this is a somewhat unrelated question, but I'm going to ask it since you're here, because I've been asked by residents on this, for whatever reason, twice in the last two weeks, including one this past weekend. The, like, the exits of I-275 at, like, Six Mile, for example, Seven Mile, where you see the lawn get out of control during the course of the year, who cuts that?
The state's supposed to cut it, but when it, when they don't, and it becomes a vision obstruction, we go ahead and cut it.
So does this company do that?
Those are times I won't get reimbursed, but...
Does this company do that?
Yes, they do.
And so we charge the state?
We do not charge the state.
Oh, okay. No, so, so do we hold the state, though, to the same standards that we do within our community, in the nine inches? And we don't, because I see it, but...
Yeah. I guess I'm not sure how the enforcement would work at the state level from here. I mean, we try to get that done, just like the county. We make calls to people at the county, and we try to get things addressed.
Do you, do you know how many times a year they cut that?
I do not know.
I know I'm putting you on the spot here, it's just...
No, it's not very often, and I do get complaints. When it becomes a vision obstruction, we'll just send our crew out to cut that.
Okay, and so we just do it as a service, then? And we just pay for that?
Well, we always try to make contact with, with the state or the county, depending on what the road is, but, yeah.
All right, I guess that gives me the facts I was looking for. I don't really like it, but it gives me the facts I was looking for. Thanks, I can at least answer that question.
All right.
You can give a call to our state senator, who was at the last...
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Or dial a prayer, either one. Anyhow, channel, anyone from the audience as well? No? Okay. Number seven is vacating requests. Engineering Division to vacate water maine easement within Schoolcraft College located at 18600 Haggerty Road and 179500 College Parkway. Mr. Zalinsik, this is you, isn't it?
Yep, just a housekeeping issue. We want to accommodate Schoolcraft College to vacate the existing location for the water maine due to proposed construction, and looking to be sent to the planning commission for their routing and approval in the near future here. I know it's a two-month process. Do have John Wright from Schoolcraft College here, in case there's any further questions, but pretty simple, pretty straightforward, and we know it's going to take a couple of months to get, to get the easement approval process completed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll offer the resolution referring this to the planning commission on consent, if there's no objection.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman White. Councilman Cretzman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question, maybe a clarification through the chair to Todd. So what we have before us this evening is vacating an existing easement, correct?
Correct.
So there's, is it an active easement that's being used with an active water maine now?
Correct.
Looking to relocate the water maine?
Looking to relocate the water maine as part of this...
Is that something that will be covered cost-wise by the college?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so then they'll be coming back with an additional easement down the road?
Yeah, you'll be looking to dedicate it at no charge for the future relocation to help us in future maintenance, yes.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Anybody else? Anyone from the audience? We have an approving on consent, Madam Clerk. Item nine, or, excuse me, item eight is a request for additional appropriation and expenditure in Engineering Division. Go right ahead, Mr. Zalinsik.
As you all know, we recently completed the Ann Arbor Trail improvements from Echols to Newburgh. As part of that project, we were able to take advantage of some of the existing traffic control devices that were set up to do the two southbound lanes at the corner of Ann Arbor Trail and Newburgh, near the 711. They were in pretty bad shape, very deteriorated as you traverse the area. We wanted to get that area completed before school. As you know, last year, we did some improvements down in that area shortly after election, primary election. So again, we want to continue further, further north and able to get that area completed. Hard rock came to the rescue to do that work. DPW provided the signage and traffic control for us to occur, so it was a team effort. We were able to get that done within a week period, and looking for payment based on the contract unit prices that were part of 19C, an amount of $25,091. And just looking for, again, your approval, and if you have further questions, I'll be happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, your pleasure, your direction.
Madam President.
Yes, please, go right ahead.
So this is loosely related to what you just said, but if my understanding is correct, it was a civil engineering traffic study that removed the stop signs down many of the roads, such as Levan, Wayne Road, and the such, correct?
This is referring to Newburgh and Ann Arbor Trail?
I know what we're talking about here, you know, disregard, I'll talk to you later about it. Not disregard.
Okay, certainly. Anyone else? Okay, we have an approving then, don't we?
If not, I'll offer an approving.
Thank you. Approving then on consent, would you say, or?
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Councilman Meakin. Anyone else from the audience wishing to speak to that item? Hearing and seeing no one, then we'll move on to item nine, which is a waiver petition from our planning commission by, let's see, petition 2019070211, submitted by Green Palace Reflexology to operate a massage establishment on the south side of Five Mile between Middlebelt and Reref Roads in the northeast quarter of Section 23. Mr. Taramina.
Thank you. This proposed massage establishment would be at the Mid-5 Shopping Plaza, which is at the southwest corner of Five Mile and Middlebelt Roads. It's a large community size shopping complex, about 86,000 square feet. This particular unit would be at the south end of the plaza, would occupy a unit that's just under 3,000 square feet in size. The proposed use at this location does comply with the special waiver requirements, which mandate that they not be within, that any new massage establishment not be within 400 feet of another massage establishment, nor the same distance from any school, place of worship, daycare center, or the like. There are no other massage establishments or those types of other facilities within 400 feet. This would not involve any exterior modifications to the building other than signage. Planning, parking is adequate for the site. Planning Commission reviewed this after, after public hearing a couple of weeks ago and is recommending approval of the proposed use at this location. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taramina. Council?
I have a question.
Yeah, yeah, please, go ahead.
Mr. Taramina, is the petitioner here tonight?
She is.
Okay. Question for the petitioner, if I may?
Would the petitioner approach the podium, please, and give us your name and address? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Your name and address, yes?
My name is Yan Zhang. I live in the 44532 March Trail Plymouth.
Plymouth, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, did you want her to continue, or would you...
Well, I have a question.
Yeah. Councilwoman McIntyre has a question for you.
And I think this is to the petitioner, but also maybe to Mr. Taramina. I recall in past, when previous reflexology businesses have come before us, if I'm, and I also know that all the licensing for massage therapy is done at the state level, the city has no jurisdiction. But if I recall correctly, reflexology, if it's reflexology only, it does not require licensing by the practitioners who would work for you. But a number of the reflexology businesses in Livonia, the practitioners do have their state massage licenses. Will the people working for you doing the reflexology, will they have licenses through the state?
Uh, yes. Um, um, my service, um, my first service, the type is the foot reflexology.
Okay.
Second is the back acupressure.
Okay.
This is, uh, just not massage. This is, uh, the Asian, the Chinese.
Yep.
Uh, yeah.
Yep, I'm very familiar with it.
So, uh, the, um, the employee will be certified by, um, National Organization for Asian, um, Bodywork Therapy or licensed by the Board of Massage Safety License in Michigan. I already got it.
Okay, very good. Because I think if it's reflexology only, it does, reflexology only does not require a license, but I'm happy to hear that. I, I always think it's good when, even if you're only going to do reflexology, I, I think it shows a commitment to the business and your employees to have the licenses. So thank you very much.
Uh, okay.
Sure. Did you want to add something? Go ahead, please.
Okay, I just, I have some, the picture of the sample of my shop.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, we will be do the, here, this is for the, we will put the three chairs for the back acupressure. And that is the foot reflexology foot sofa about seven or eight here. Um, and we keep the door, just keep the door open.
Right.
Yeah, no private room is offered, just, uh, yes, the customer close on his section. Just like the, I, I don't know, do you know the Chi, uh, Wu Xin Chinese massage, yeah, the same service type like that?
Okay.
Just, yes, in acupressure, um, section and the foot reflex section, just the close up, yes. We just, um, make them the headache, lower peg pin, neck pin, or sciatic, or we plush pin, yeah, just like that. Because I have, before I have, sorry, I have a reflexology business in Kansas. Yes, I have a, a lot of, uh, experience to do that. That business is popular, trust me. It's good.
Go right ahead.
And are these the pictures of your actual business?
Uh, yes, this is, I'm going to the, yes, like that. This is really the sample. I just want to, because the, uh, the size is the three thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, just exactly, exactly.
Okay, very nice. Very nice. Thank you, thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So you have a big space to cover in there, three thousand square feet, right?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And another question just, um, we can take, uh, groups, yeah, welcome, welcome. We can take the three people, four people, five people, or even six or seven people at the same time.
Okay.
As my business, yes, it's growing.
How many days a week are you gonna be opening, what hours? How many days a week during the week?
From nine to nine, seven days a week.
Nine to nine, seven days a week?
Yes.
Wow.
Yes.
And where do your customers come from mostly?
Come from just the, um, oh, the, the customer will be found us at the, our pro- uh, protect the Bo Shu, uh, business card, or Yellow Page, uh, Google website, and the newspaper advising on the, um, forming links, uh, just the local health, uh, practitioner.
Do you have any of your own clients at your brain? I know you're moving here from Kansas. Your daughter's going to the University of Michigan.
Yes, this is the big reason.
Yeah, that's very nice.
Yes, so I want to.
Great school, by the way. Yes.
I want to leave her together, thank you.
Okay, well, good. Okay, well, um, does anybody have any questions? No? Okay. Well, then we need some direction for, um, Green Palace, um...
Madam President.
Yes, go right ahead.
I'll offer the approving resolution.
Okay. Councilman Mikan has, hold on one second, has offered an approving. Was there any others? No? Okay. Right now, you have an approving resolution for, uh, the twenty-third. Did you want that on the regular or the, uh, consent?
Consent would be fine.
Consent agenda. So basically, um, you don't need to come back. Uh, Mr. Taramina, um, could you explain to her?
I will.
After the meeting. After the meeting, Mr. Taramina explained to you that you, you're in good, you're in good stead right now, or good, good shape, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Wrong words to use, but, okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. All right. Uh, anyone else want to explain that? No? Uh, okay, is there anyone from the audience that wants to come forward on the item? No? Okay, good. All right, we're on item ten then, counsel. Uh, item ten is a waiver petition from our planning commission, petition 2019070212, submitted by Zookin's Rib Shack to utilize a Class C liquor license cell of beer and some wine and some spirits for consumption on the premises, and to expand existing food service to operate and include an outdoor dining patio in connection with the operation of a full-service restaurant on the south side of Five Mile Road between Farmington and Asher's Roads in the northeast quarter of Section 21. Mr. Taramina.
It's a pretty straightforward application, uh, by Zookin's Rib Shack to operate a Class C liquor license at, at, uh, the existing restaurant on Five Mile Road. Um, Zookin's would also like to add an outdoor dining patio. This would occur, uh, basically on the sidewalk on the north side of the, uh, restaurant. Uh, the, uh, patio would be rather small, about, uh, seven feet by thirty-five, forty feet. Would only, um, have the capacity to accommodate about six, six people, just a few tables. Uh, the seating would remain at, uh, the limitation, uh, which they were approved at previously, and which is forty-eight. So during the seven, summer months, they would move some seats from in, the inside of the restaurant to the, uh, to the patio, and then vice versa, bring those seats back during the, uh, the winter months. Uh, this does, uh, well, access to the patio, it would be from the interior of the restaurant that's required by our police department, uh, that there'd be separate access also. It would be fenced, uh, with the appropriate emergency, um, uh, egress gate provided. Uh, there's some details, I believe, in your packet that show what that fencing would look like. Uh, this is, um, this does require counsel's, um, approval, uh, to waive, uh, the separation requirement. There are two other such licensed businesses within a thousand feet of Zookin's. Uh, that includes O'Malley's Bar and Grill as well as, uh, the Bench Pub, both of which are, uh, within that distance and, uh, would require, uh, counsel's separation of, of the thousand-foot requirement. Planning commission is recommending approval of this request, and I believe you should have all of the, uh, conditions of approval, uh, provided in your packet.
Thank you, Ms. Taramina. Uh, counsel, any questions for Mr. Taramina to, to, no? Want to go to the petitioner?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Petitioner. Oh, you do. Pardon me, go right ahead.
Mark, could you please remind us what has changed in the liquor license world that now allows, that now allows these, um, Class C licenses? Because there's been a liberalization or an increase, right, in availability of these? Is that correct?
With respect to the, uh, on-premise license like the Class Cs.
Yep.
Nothing has changed, uh, so much that affects the city of Livonia. We did, uh, expand, uh, the, uh, opportunity for Class C license to include C1 zoning. Uh, that was done fairly recently. But this, however, is, is, is Zone C2, uh, so would have been, um, um, would qualify for, for this type of license with or without that recent amendment. Uh, I think you might be also, you might be thinking about the expansion of the, um, specialty, uh, special designated, uh, designated merchant license, SDM or the STD licenses. Uh, that's been expanded, uh, most recently by the state, by the Michigan Liquor Control.
I, I think I was thinking both of those things, um, with our change, with our change in the zoning and then also the state.
Correct.
Um, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
You're more than welcome. Um, anyone else before we go to the petitioner? Okay, Mr. Petitioner, good evening. Conz?
Hi, how you doing?
Hey, good. It's Louis Conz, 338975 Mile, Livonia. Ready. And I think we've heard those two things. How's business pretty good then?
Yes, yes, it's getting better. Yep. One of the reasons for, for requesting it is I had requests from a lot of the customers that would enjoy a beverage with that type of food and everything else. We do have a majority of the carryout, uh, for the reason that they want to take it home and have one. So they would like to stay in and, uh, enjoy it there instead of rushing home and trying to still have it warm. So, uh, that is one of the reasons I kind of went this route because of so many requests through the customers and stuff like that.
And tell a little bit about the patio. Where, where would you like the patio at?
Well, basically, it's right there in Five Mile. And again, a, a good portion of it is just so that there be some recognition to, people would see it. It's so easy to pass by, um, and drive past it without recognizing what it is. I just think it would help enhance the awareness. And then also, it would be a door, I think, is there, yeah, right there. It'd be the first window right there by the corner, um, to the left, and that would end up being a doorway. And then the rail, lumbar rail, all the way down. And then it would also have a gate that you can, that's required to get out, one-way gate.
Okay. Uh, counsel, Vice President Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so I actually got takeout for my family from your establishment on Friday. Um, I was impressed with how nice it looked on the inside. It's really a...
Oh, well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Clean place, so, um, when we're looking at these strip malls, um, creative uses and hinkers that will draw people in are not only good for your business, but they're good for all the surrounding businesses as well. Um, I have no problem with this at all, and I think it's a good idea.
And we would also, like I said, make sure that, on the outside, it will be very appealing, you know, with the flower planters, stuff like that, and just definitely, uh, enhance the look of the plazas, so.
With that being said, Madam President, I'll, I'll offer an approving for consent if there are no objections. But I think this is, it's something that's good for our community.
Thank you. He has offered an approving on consent. Were there any others? Yes, go over to him.
Some questions about the patio. I, I understand that that's a sidewalk to nowhere.
Mm-hmm.
But that's also probably the biggie, busiest, most of the cars cut right there to get to the back driveway, so they're cutting across, so they can turn left right there.
Not that much. A lot of them, I mean...
Every time I'm in there, there's somebody going there, so. I forget your restaurant often, and it's, uh, very good food. And I can understand where the liquor license would help your dinner crowd. I'm just not con- convinced that the patio is really gonna help you any. Um, I, I have some safety issues, I think. I've had other clients where they had patios and cars have driven right through a patio. I mean, it does happen. Um, I, I just have some concerns about being seated right there.
Right.
Without, I mean, there's no barriers preventing, I mean, a car's gonna knock a fence down without a problem. Is there any concrete?
Are you concerned with it coming west, going east through the driveway there, or turning, once you're in the plaza?
In the plaza going, turning left in front of your place to that driveway.
Right, so that corner, well, it's gonna stop. I'm just gonna look at the picture. Um, right along, just beyond that window. So there's gonna be the corner of the building right there as you, I don't know, can we go back to the other picture with the, yeah, or the next one? See, it's gonna st- stop, well, the next one there.
Help, no?
No, one more, right there. So there's gonna be two pillars there still, so it's not gonna go all the way to the corner.
To the corner.
It's gonna stop just beyond that first window. So the, if they're gonna hit any, they're gonna come up over the sidewalk and take out the corner before they even get to where the patio will be.
And you really think you'll increase the sales to offset the cost of implementing this patio?
Well, I look at it this way, where the cost to put the patio would be the same amount to put a sign, which I'd be back in front of you.
Well, and then all the restrictions that the planning commission put on you.
Pardon?
And included with all the restrictions the planning commission put on.
Right. Are you talking in terms of advertising out there or stuff like?
Advertising, no radio, no TVs, I mean...
No, right. No, like I said, I'm not trying to be anything, I'm not, in terms of, it's just more or less, some people like to go out there and have a drink. And also, just the aesthetics of it. I mean, more people are gonna notice some tables out there with the rail than there are sometimes even the sign.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Kritzman.
Thank you. Um, I, I, I think it's a great idea to have a little nice spot out there, but I do think the comments from Councilman Mikan are, uh, something certainly to look into. I'd be curious to see what that distance is from the curb to where that sidewalk starts. Certainly, you know, what we're seeing in the photograph there, that's not even a real six inch, six inch high curb. That, based on pavement being added over the years, that thing looks to be about three inches, so not much of a deterrent there. If possible, I would strongly recommend that you consider concrete planters out there set at an interval that would be, uh, it's, it's an opportunity for planting.
Sure.
Uh, annuals and landscaping and things of that sort, but at the same time, protecting the patrons that are sitting there.
Right.
I don't think it would be inhibiting traffic, and it may, if anything, cause people to slow down a little bit as they cut through there. But I look forward to it.
I would have to talk to the, in fact, she's here, the property manager, before I can put those.
And ultimately, the city has ordinance requirements that dictate the width of two-way traffic.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
So what I'd recommend doing is finding out what that ordinance requirement is. Um, I think it's twenty-two feet for two-way.
In this case, twenty-four, and it's, it's.
Twenty-four?
Yeah.
And then, so if you're above, if you're beyond twenty-four feet, maybe you look at setting a series of concrete planters out there that would, uh, help improve the aesthetics of that view from Five Mile. It would have the added benefit of being planter opportunities for you to add some color out there. And on the third side, protect the patrons that are sitting out there.
Sure. Yeah.
Also, yep. So as you come to your patio, will it meet that sidewalk? Is that what it's gonna do? Are you gonna lift it up a bit, or?
No, it would be right at the sidewalk.
Right at the sidewalk.
The post and everything, yeah.
Okay.
Which most are.
But the patio floor will be even with the sidewalk, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and how, how far out into that driveway area, um, are you gonna come? All the way to the curb then? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, thanks, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So the whole area would be patio, basically?
Well, except for, you're talking length or width?
Cemetery, yeah. Okay, um, all ready. Okay, so, Mr. Taramina, could the Bench Pub do the same thing? Uh, I'm, I'm trying to remember that site. Do they have enough room where they could request a patio as well?
They could request a patio. I, circumstances, I'd have to look at, uh, the, uh, the area at that location to see. Um, we'd have to discuss that with the inspection department. Uh, the, little different circumstances.
Okay.
Uh, where the Bench Pub is located.
Sure.
I'm not sure the sidewalk is, it may be as wide, but it's probably, um, used a little more than this one. Uh, plus, you've got the, uh, probably an aisleway there, uh, that runs along the building, as you can see from this photo, that's probably used, uh, a little bit more. So I, I don't know, it, it, they could very well bring a patio request to you, but, uh, but, um, um, I'm not sure if it's, uh, there's any change of circumstances.
No, not, sir, Mr. Con, I'm not going after your business to come over to the Bench Pub. I don't mean it that way. I'm just, I'm just.
Sure.
I'm excited about what you're doing, don't get me wrong, and I think it's great. Uh, I'm just hearing that.
Right.
When you do that, it'll probably influence that other business to want to come in and do something, which is great.
One of the reasons why I, I did that is because, again, that is not, um, traveled. It's not really used. It's, I can understand if I was doing it in the front, which would be a little bit more, but I feel that, uh, with it being off to the side, it would be a little bit better and, uh...
Sure.
It'd be hard to be out front.
Yeah. No, that's fine. I, I just, in asking those questions to Mr. Taramina, I don't want you to think of us sliding you.
Oh, no, no, not at all.
I needed to, um, clarify that a little bit. Okay. Well, you have an approving on consent. Um, so, um, and lastly, to Mr. Taramina, does this, um, uh, liquor license, if you will, go with this site? So if he were to sell tomorrow, would that still be available? Or he would be able to sell that, correct?
Well, the use of the license at this location would be restricted to this user only, and that is, uh, in the planning commission's recommendations.
I thought I read it, okay.
However, the other part of your question, could he sell it? Yes, he could sell the license.
He could sell it, sure.
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. And it could, it could be moved to a new location.
Sure.
Or it could stay at this location with a new user, subject to counsel's approval.
Certainly. So do you have a liquor license on it at this point?
I have put one, uh, down payment on it and everything, and it's dependent upon the outcome.
Oh, good. Okay, good, good for you. All right. Well, we have an approving on consent. If there's no other questions, I'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience this evening would like to address this gentleman's petition? No? Okay. Thank you for coming in. You have an approving on consent.
This will have to appear on the regular because of that, uh, separate requirement.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So it has to go on the regular, please, um, Madam Clerk? All right. Thank you, Mr. Con, so much.
Okay, thank you.
It's on the regular for the twenty-third, sir.
Okay, so then I come back.
Yes, come on back, sure.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks so much, yep. Item eleven is a request to approve, uh, the 2019-2024 Capital Improvements, uh, program, and this is brought to us from the planning commission. Mr. Taramina.
Uh, the capital improvement program, uh, includes years 2019 through 2024. Uh, this follows the same format as previous capital improvement, uh, programs. Um, it identifies, uh, the, um, various public improvements, uh, both structures and, and, and other items, uh, for that six-year, uh, period, um, itemized by, uh, department, uh, prioritized, uh, estimated costs, costs that the city, uh, would be responsible for, uh, what the, uh, funding source would be, as well as, uh, the, the, the type of project we've categorized, and the area benefit, um, associated with the improvement. So you've got, uh, I don't know how many pages, but multiple pages. We've sorted, sorted, uh, the projects, um, uh, the, the capital improvements, um, by various, um, ways, um, and, uh, we've provided totals, uh, broken down both by department, by, uh, by, by funding source, project type, as well as area benefit. Uh, this is a requirement of the Michigan Enabling, um, Planning Enabling Act, and, um, planning commission has approved it, and typically, the council receives this document, and, um, and it serves as an aid in doing the annual budget. Uh, and, um, if desired, you would place it in committee. I know that's been done in the past. Um, I think the Finance and Budget Committee in the, in the past has reviewed these items.
Okay. Counsel, your pleasure, your direction then?
Yes.
Yes.
Pardon?
Used to be in the capital improvement.
Mm-hmm. It did, you're right.
Is that the committee that it's still?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, Kathy. It's Kathy White. Mm-hmm.
Madam President?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry for not remembering. So is our typical action to put this in committee, or is it to approve it?
Capital, usually capital, right? Right?
Yes. I'm just not remembering.
I think you receive and file.
It's receive and file, but we also put it in the committee, because we've had the five-year plans.
We have it in committee already. That item's in committee.
But there's, there are separate five-year plans, so the five-year plan is in the committee. So we can almost put one in and remove one that's five years old.
So do we need that motion?
Yes.[1748.25]